Okay, joining us tonight, we're actually gonna have, I'm gonna take a lot of presidential prerogative tonight. Joining us for the Pledge of Allegiance are the NJROTC cadets from Garfield High School. And then we're also gonna have a special guest who is going to do the National Anthem for us. And by way of a little bit of extra prerogative as we listen to the, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, as we listen to the National Anthem, I'd like us just to keep, as we're pondering what it means to be civil, and what it means to be Americans, and what it means to be patriotic, that we keep the people whose lives were affected, most recently in Orlando, in our thoughts and our prayers, that we think about the brothers and the sisters, the mothers, the fathers, the children that were affected by an unspeakable tragedy. So as we do that tonight, and as we celebrate our patriotism, we just keep that in mind. With that, if we could rise.
Ready, cut. Present, colors.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if we could have Mr. Larry Altup join us for the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, though bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Port, colors. Ready, cut. Port, arms. Pose. March. Colors, halt. Pose, colors. Ready, two. Pose, march. Colors, halt. About, face. I got some marks this year, because when I introduce the color guard, I would always forget something, so I had them write down. Nathaniel Sis, Cadet Lieutenant J.G., carries a .3.6. Must be a police officer, either in civil or for the military. George Smith, peddles first class, carries a .3.4, wants to be an MMA fighter, won't see what happens there. D.O.A. Dean, carries a .3.7, peddles second class, cadet, plans to be in ROTC for four years, then to take up medical technology, she wants to be a nurse, or in civilian life in the Navy. And Angel Harris, peddles second class, grade point average, she's a .3.2, she wants to be a photographer in the United States Navy. My wife asked me, quickly, my wife asked me why I wanted to do this, I'd like to see the board and the community to see what they're paying for, right? Because we get out into the community and the cadets do extremely, extremely well, as also does, I want you to know who's not here, he's on his way, his name is Jay Lallios, and his mom is right there. He graduated from STEM this year, and he got a, he didn't get a partial scholarship, he got a complete scholarship above and beyond with the National Guard and University of Akron.
By way of some additional license tonight, we are going to dispense with community and school reflections, except to say that it's always fantastic to finish another graduation season. All of us had the opportunity to attend several graduations across the city this year, to watch fine young ladies and gentlemen walk across the stage and receive their well-earned diploma, and many of them going into the workforce, or heading into the military, or heading off to college, and to see the accolades that they received as part of their graduation, the scholarship money, the awards, the recognition was just outstanding. And so, you know, it's a tribute to, to not only our teaching staff, and our administrative staff, and the wonderful schools that all of you support, but it's also a tribute to the parents and the family members that put so much into their children to make sure that they know the value of their education, and that they work really hard to get where they did, and so we appreciate all of that, and we just wanna say thank you for all that the community does, thank you for all that the staff and the teachers do, we appreciate it, and it was really, a really great season. We're also going to switch the agenda slightly, to do communications and recognitions first, starting with the recognition of the spring sports All-City academic teams, if we can start there, so Mr. Vassalati.
Thank you. Hi, everybody, and thanks for recognizing our student athletes tonight. With each season, each of our teams submits a group of players qualified for our All-City academic league, and to do that, a student athlete must earn at least a .3.4 GPA. We're proud to report in the spring, our spring sports, boys and girls track, baseball, softball, and boys tennis, we had 131 student athletes throughout the city qualified, at least a .3.4 GPA, so we have a few to represent tonight, we have nine of our coaches here, one to two of their players each, I'll call them in to introduce the players that he or she has brought, and say a few brief words. So I see Coach Schuman at the front of the door, so Coach, you're up first, Coach Schuman from Ellis Softball, Ellis won the regular season and the city championship game in softball this year.
Thank you, and thank you for recognizing our student athletes, that's what they are first, we've got a nice representation with our team, we have quite a few, recognized as academic All-City. I brought two with me, two sisters, on my far left is Samantha Wolf, she's a junior, she's our second baseman, and next to her is our freshman sister Sydney Wolf. Both of them were recognized academic All-City, and also on the All-City team as players also. One, Sam, was a second baseman for us, and Sydney was an outfielder and our second pitcher for us, but appreciate it, and it was a fine year, and it's same time, I want to say that Mr. Vassalati, Mr. Larry, they're an outstanding job for us, and that we feel well represented at the board, case with us, appreciate it very much, thank you.
Next, I see Coach Rossnick here, from East High School Baseball, Coach, come on up.
I brought with me Desmond Fang, he's a freshman, goes to the Akron Early College, 4.0 student. What's great about Desmond is that he also earned his first varsity letter with us this year, so it really shows the commitment that he made, not only to our team, but to continuing his excellent effort as a member of the Early College student body there, but 4.0 student, first-year letter winner, Desmond Fang.
Next, we'll have Coach DiDonato from Garfield Softball.
Thank you very much, my name's John DiDonato, Garfield High School, first-year softball coach, and I brought with me Cameron Woodley, she attends NIF STEM High School in Garfield's district, and she represents our softball team, she's a sophomore, gonna be a junior, excellent student, cumulative .3.9, National Honor Society inductee this year, and also she'll be taking advantage of the college and career program in attending the University of Akron next year as well. And more importantly, outside of being a good academic student, she's a great person, we need more Cameron Woodleys in the Akron Public Schools system.
From Firestone Boys Tennis, Coach Sapsel.
It's my pleasure to introduce Jacob Pell Ryan, who was part of the city series-winning tennis team this year, without his help, probably couldn't have been done, so appreciate that. He's going on to Kent State, where he will have a double major in Spanish translation and international business, and I think Spanish translation came after your study abroad in Spain, correct? I'm jealous, but I'm going there too.
Firestone did win the city championship, sweeping all five matches of the city championship event in Ellis, too. Next, I think Coach Booker's out there, is Mr. Williamson, oh, there he is, Pell Ryan, Coach. Coach Booker from East Softball, East finished second, the city this year qualified for the city championship game at Firestone Stadium. Also, Coach Booker was Coach of the Year, I must say that about.
What I'm most proud of is my team's GPA average was .3.3 as a team, I brought with me sophomore Kalen Hill, she has a .3.68 GPA, she's involved in ROTC, DECA, and she's just an awesome person all around, her sister, you see them, they look like twins, she's graduating, but I'm gonna miss her, but I got Kalen, I guarantee, she's gonna be Player of the Year before she graduates. Shayla Ware, she has a .3.94 GPA, she's a junior, this is her first year playing softball, and she got All-City honorable mention, never, ever played in the game before, and she was our starting left fielder, and she earned her first varsity letter this year.
Next, I see Coach Carroll's there, from Firestone Track, Coach, you wanna come on up, please?
Appreciate you guys having us, and this is Kennedy Major, so this is her first year on the track team, she's in 10th grade, but in addition to having good grades, she did a great job for us this year competing, getting first team All-City, winning the high jump, you know, due to the high jump, it's a technical skill, but she learned it fast and was able to win city in a competitive field, she did a great job throwing the shot put and discus for us, and learning a lot of different events, she's got a great attitude, and I have to commend her, she has to travel to Miller South to practice, because we don't have a track right now, and to keep her grades up, and she gets home at 6:00 or later, and track meets are so long, she really just did a tremendous job, both on and off the track this year.
From North Softball, Coach Burnside.
At North, we make it a point to stress to our young ladies that they are student athletes and not athletic students, so it's very important for them to get off on the right foot early. So these are both first-year players, Summer Vathanatham and Haley Roberts, Haley has a .3.74 GPA, and Summer has a .3.6, excuse me, .61, and this is probably the greatest honor I think an athlete can get, because of the commitment level it takes to not only play the game of softball with practice, and the change in the schedule every year with weather, and to be able to commit to your academics the way you need to, there's no greater achievement than to be able to play the game and still maintain great academic success.
And I wanted to be sure not to neglect any coach who might be here, Coach Booker, anyone else? I did have two coaches who couldn't make it, they were out of town, Coach Vaughn from Bookdale Baseball wanted to pass along, recognize Dwight Austin, is Dwight here? I didn't see him out, okay. Dwight, of course, qualified for All-City Academic Team for Bookdale Baseball, and then Coach Sarver planned on being here, but called today, his flight from Florida was canceled, he's catching one tomorrow, but two young men, he wanted me to acknowledge Derek Cook and Jacob Klein, who qualified for the All-City Academic Team, and I just wanna echo what Coach Burnside said, I do think it's the highest honor for a student athlete in high school to attain, it's not easy all the time, they put in the commitment to long practices and games and bus rides and so forth, so that's what it's all about. I was just recently at a football camp with some APS football players in Youngstown, the college coaches were preaching to them about academics, which is so nice to see, and here, because the coach's point was, even if you go play in the NFL, the average NFL career is two years, you know, what are you gonna do at age 24, 25, when you're not playing sports anymore? So it's something that'll benefit them the rest of their lives, for sure, thanks again for allowing the time to recognize.
Next on the agenda, presentation of distinguished emeritus certificates, and so I think, just like to mention, there were a few folks that could not join us this evening, so I wanna, before we jump in, I'll mention those real quick. Dorothy Evans, Educational Assistant, 48 years of dedicated service to Akron Public Schools. Robert Monkha, Custodian, 45 years of service to the Akron Public Schools. And Eddie Knapp, Aforeman, 32 years as a dedicated employee at the Akron Public Schools. If we could recognize each of those three. Each of our board members has a little bio on another distinguished emeritus recipient, so if we maybe just start around the table.
I'm all about staging, you know? It is my honor to recognize Roslyn Lanchard Lewis, she's an elementary classroom teacher. I'm gonna start, do you want me to read first, or am I? Roslyn, can you come forward? After graduating in 1973 from the Parkland Program High School in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Roslyn entered Chaney State College in Pennsylvania to become a teacher. She graduated in 1977 with a Bachelor's of Science degree in education. Roslyn joined the Akron Public Schools in September of 1985 as an elementary teacher at Cyberling Elementary School. She loyally served the Akron Public Schools as a classroom teacher, demonstration teacher, assistant principal and principal. She became a fixture in the Bookdale Cluster as a classroom teacher in the primary grades. The mark of a good teacher is the level of care and concern they have for the overall well-being of a child. Roslyn made sure she addressed the academic as well as social and emotional needs of her students. She truly loved her children and was dedicated to them. It must also be noted that she had another love as well, she loved her Cleveland Browns. We would like to thank Roslyn for her dedicated service to the children of Akron Public Schools, her presence and expertise in the classroom will be missed, have a wonderful retirement, and keep on cheering for those Browns.
I'd just like to say thank you to the board for this recognition, it was truly touched my heart. Of course, I love children, and I love the runaround students in the Akron Public Schools, it's just been a wonderful experience, I can never say enough for it, that many, many opportunities this board has allowed me. As I retired, though, it's kinda with a mixed emotion, because I would be so used to going to work, however, I'll find something to do. I do wanna recognize Mrs. Ann Gates, who was one of those persons, when I moved to Akron, Ohio, who made sure that I met board members and was mentored into coming into the Akron Public Schools, it was just an honor that she could be here with me, as well as my husband and my son. I am still a Cleveland Browns fan, I will always be a fan of Akron Public Schools, so we are season ticket holders, so thank you everyone.
And it's my pleasure to honor Walter Perry Bartholat, Maintenance Buildings and Grounds. We've all heard the phrase, choose a job that you love and you will never work a day in your life, well, it seems as if Perry Bartholat is a perfect example of that philosophy. After spending 40 years working for Akron Public Schools, Perry has retired to pursue other life passions, including fishing. Perry was hired by the Akron Public Schools as a maintenance helper in 1976, a little over a year later, he was promoted to a full-time position as a painter, and worked in that position until his retirement at the end of 2015. During his time with Akron, Perry has experienced the patching, repair, and painting of old buildings, and the rebuilding of most of the schools in our district. If walls could talk, you would surely know that Perry took some immense pride in his work. Treating our buildings like he would his own home, Perry made sure that every wall, door, and piece of trim he painted was top-notch quality. He has been described by coworkers in his department as a quiet and trustworthy person who made sure that he did quality work. Perry personified excellence throughout his service to Akron Public Schools, and his presence will surely be missed. Thank you Perry for your 40 years of dedicated service, we wish you much happening and good fishing.
I'd like Mary and Shar to come up for the podium, please. Mary is a special education teacher, Mary, Shar's a product of the Akron Public Schools, she is a proud Falcon, who graduated from Firestone High School back in 1979, after me. After high school, she attended Bowling Green State University, where she earned her Bachelor's degree and science degree in education. Mary started her teaching career with the Akron Public Schools in 1983. As a special education teacher in a severe behavioral unit at Reimer Elementary School, from Reimer, she went to Highland Park Elementary School, and ultimately to San Salem Elementary School. As one can see, she found a home at the Kenmore Cluster, where she spent her entire career working with students who have various learning behavioral disabilities. Many teachers are looked upon by their peers as leaders in the building, this fine educator fits the bill. Mary was a great resource for others who were seeking ideas on how to work with children that had learning problems, she was extremely good at providing interventions that would help other teachers find success with children struggling academically. Darcy Forché Candido, former principal at San Salem, stated that Mary was always willing to do whatever needed to be done for the good of the school. She was always looked upon as a real go-getter. Teacher Adrian Lessin summed it up best by saying, "I will dearly miss her, she is so smart, helpful, kind, so enjoyable to work with, she will be missed at all at San Salem Elementary." She will also be missed by all associated with the Akron Public Schools, we wish her the best in her newfound occupation retirement, and we would just like to say it takes a special person to work in this field, and you must have been some kind of teacher in order to be able to go all those years and do that, so congratulations. Can Ken Ferris join me at podium, please?
Ken started his career with the Akron Public Schools on September 8, 1969, as a custodial worker at Garfield High School. By November 16, 1970, he was promoted to Painter, where he worked for 10 years, then on January 6, 1981, he was promoted to Painter/Foreman. He held this position for 12 years, went on December 1, 1992, he was promoted to the position of Coordinator of Maintenance. His coordinator title was later changed to Director of Facility Services in 2009, and in that position, he spent more than half of his career in the Akron Public Schools. Throughout his many years of service at the Akron Public Schools, Ken has been described as being productive, having initiative, carrying more than his share of work, very conscientious, very knowledgeable in his field, turning out first-class work, he was well-organized, and an excellent employee. As a supervisor, he was known to get top-quality work from his crew because of his diligence, his organizational skills, and he was a quality foreman, providing positive leadership. Mr. Ferris continued to go beyond what was required for good performance, and was willing to adjust schedules and to work to meet the needs. to adjust schedules and to work to meet the needs of the school system. At all hours of the day or night, Ken could be reached to provide assistance, especially when the various building alarms would sound, which resulted in numerous nighttime travels to any of the Akron Public Schools' locations. Ken could be counted on to provide accurate information that dealt with handling building emergencies related to the weather, water, heat and power that are needed to keep the students and staff warm, safe and dry. If you haven't done the math, Mr. Ferris started the Akron Public Schools in nineteen sixty-nine, and after forty-seven years of dedicated service, Ken retired this past May thirty-first. We wish him much happiness in his retirement and thank him for his many years of dedication and service to the Akron Public Schools.
For me, it's been an amazing journey, and I will always appreciate the professional growth and development opportunity afforded me by the Akron School District. It's been a blessing to be associated with an outstanding management team and staff who genuinely care about providing outstanding services to our school district. Our team has my utmost respect and admiration. Serving the district has been a privilege and an honor I'll always fondly remember. It has indeed been an amazing journey. I'd like to thank you all.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask that Donna Cummings could come forward. I am extremely happy to have the privilege of sharing this statement of support for her, Donna Cummings Office Support. Donna Cummings retired from the Akron Public Schools with thirty-three years of dedicated service, and I am happy to have shared almost seventeen of those thirty-three years with her. She is a proud East High graduate, and she attended the University of Akron where she studied accounting. Donna began and ended her career in the Treasurer's Office, being a nineteen eighty-two, as a beginning in nineteen eighty-two as an Account Clerk One. She was promoted in nineteen eighty-four to Account Clerk Two, and in nineteen eighty-five, she was promoted to Account Clerk Three, and in nineteen eighty-eight, she was promoted to Account Clerk Four. Donna moved on to work as a Payroll Assistant in nineteen ninety-one, and in nineteen ninety-six, she was promoted to Accounting Technician, which is a position she held when she retired in December of two thousand and fifteen. Donna met her husband, Bill, during her tenure in the Payroll Department while Bill was a district custodian. Donna and Bill, both avid bowlers and golfers, will be splitting their time with family in Ohio and Florida, as well as continuing their annual summer fishing trek to Canada with family and friends. Enjoy your retirement, Donna. We wish you every happiness as you share with your grandchildren and other family members, and we salute you in the excellent work that you have done by way of Akron Public Schools. A pleasure.
To all of you that received recognition tonight, congratulations, and thank you for your long and dedicated service for all that you've done for our district and for the kids that go here. If we could all recognize them one last time. Thank you. And with that, we are going to slowly head into the business portion of our meeting. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome. If you'd like some time to... Yeah. Why don't we just take a two-minute recess before we jump back in? We are back in session. We have requests to address the board, and we'll begin first with Katie Witness on behalf of Catherine Johnson, President of Firestone High School, PTSA. And just so, you have three minutes to address the board. Mr. Pendleton will help keep time. We'll give you, I'll try and give you a high sign about a minute or so, a minute or so left, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'm speedy. Hi. This statement expresses the desires of the parents, teachers and students of Firestone High School. See Mrs. Clara Copeland remain at Firestone next year. We've been informed of the plan to transfer her from the building, but have yet to hear a sound or logical reasoning as to why. For us, Mrs. Copeland represents the strongest admin lead remaining at the school with the experience to guide the staff and educators into the new building. She possesses the necessary building and institutional knowledge, exhibits superior leadership and communication skills, and is fantastic with the students. Thankfully, she's remained a stable presence at Firestone because our head principal has changed four times during five years, and we have cycled through countless assistant principals and counselors as well. This kind of turnover is unsettling for students and parents and leaves us with inexperienced administrators having to acclimate to our building and its very specialized needs. That learning curve creates a stressful environment for staff and parents who have had to endure this same scenario way too often. Mrs. Copeland is a consistent presence at PTSA meetings, dinners, student banquets, after-school activities, sports games and dances. Most recently, she was one of two unit principals who attended after prom and the only one who stayed until three-thirty a.m. Her presence was invaluable in keeping the kids from getting too rowdy. Truly, it was. The students responded to her because she has earned their respect over the years. I know our team of parents sincerely appreciated her help. At the building's final walkthrough on June third, she and only one teacher staffed the entire event with over seven hundred people touring the building that night. As a former English teacher in the building, she has built relationships with our alums over the years. She makes herself available on her own time to come in and give alum tours for class reunions. This has been especially important for classes wanting to see the old building before it's turned, torn down. Staff call her approachable, the most knowledgeable administrator without, about student activities and how Firestone operates. Calm and collected and fair with staff, she does not have an agenda, she does her job right and without complaint, and understands the unique needs and concerns of students and staff. She lives in the cluster and is engaged in the community. Her own daughter's graduated from FHS. She truly has a unique understanding of the needs of our school with the many specialty programs that attract so many students to Firestone. She is an irreplaceable asset and will be much needed during our transition to the new building. While the move offers many exciting opportunities, change is stressful, and our parents and staff don't need the additional burdens of having to acclimate to three new administrators during that same timeframe. Mrs. Copeland has the backing of the PTSA and the faculty at Firestone High School, and we implore those making decisions to please leave her with us at Firestone. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Of course, the superintendent will be in touch. It's not difficult to do a response now. We will, we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you so much.
And Miss Cindy Altop. Mrs. Cindy Altop. Welcome. I think you, did you hear the last letter?
I was trying to.
Three minutes, and we'll give you a high sign at one minute.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Hello, my name is Cindy Altop, and I am a member of the Firestone Cluster and a parent of two Firestone High School alumni. I am here to support Mrs. Copeland and request that she remain at Firestone. I had the privilege of having Mrs. Copeland as my English teacher in Pennsylvania, and amazingly, my son and daughter also had her as their administrator at Firestone. In addition to being a fortunate coincidence, my children found her to have the same amazing qualities as I did. She is an administrator who transcends time and can gain the confidence and trust to make the students successful. My family can attest to this, as can many families in the community. She understands what students need and how to help them. She is the student's go-to principal, as well as that of the parents. If anyone has concern, she will drop everything and deal with it. During her tenure at Firestone, Mrs. Copeland has gained the respect and trust of the parents, community and faculty. This is no easy feat, as we have extremely high standards for those who are untrusted with our children. She is a twenty-four-seven administrator who is perhaps Akron Public Schools' best ambassador as she supports all high school and community events, as well as being an overall champion for the programs within the district. Mrs. Copeland has maintained her strong presence in the Firestone family as many administrators have been moved in and out. With the upcoming transition to the new building, the community and students are looking at her move as a counterproductive decision. Students will have at least four new administrators to whom they must adapt. She is the stability and the consistency of the cluster, and to say the least, this is an untimely and unfortunate decision that we would like you to reconsider, as students will face many challenges in the building. The students respect her and look to her as a strong leader that should stay with them. Families in West Akron, West Akron are highly supportive of all Akron Public School programs, and we ask that you support our need to have Mrs. Copeland remain at Firestone. She has met all standards for being a model leader, and she deserves the respect of remaining a Firestone Pelican. Thank you.
With that, we are going to move into the business portion of our meeting. We'll start with the approval of the regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendations?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration eighty-two personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I need their approval.
So move. I have questions. There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions?
Yes, item number fourteen. Who's to recommend an establishment of a daily rate for an administrative specialist at three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a day? What exactly does that person do for three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a day?
Right. In your Dear Board Member letter, there is a description of what that position is. It's a...
Well, explain it to me.
It's a, I'm trying to. There, it's a subposition, and there are three different rates, and through some research from Human Resources and Mr. Pendleton, we decided to come up with one rate for some clarity and also some fairness in terms of the substitute rate for some of our teachers bumping up to that rate.
I just think some of these salaries are getting out of control, and I just want to go on record as saying that it's, I don't care what degree you got, there's people out there struggling just to pay their electric and eat, and some of these salaries that we're paying is absolutely ridiculous. But, that's all I got.
Any other, any other questions or discussion?
I just wanted to go back to retirees, and on the list is Penny P., who my son had the opportunity of having as a teacher at Litchfield, a very outstanding individual, outstanding teacher, and I just regret that he was not able to bring in this new group of students into the new building, but I know she's been a teacher for a long time, and we salute her for her work in molding our children, I know mine and many others.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments or discussion on personnel recommendations? Hearing none, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Otterman?
No.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Except for my, I'm sorry, the last item.
Last item. Reverend Walker.
Eighty-two.
Extension.
Extension.
Eighty-two. Noted. Ms. Millsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration five motions and seven resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I need their approval.
So move. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration fifteen business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I need their approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on business affairs recommendations?
Quick question on number seven. I was curious, who's going to get the leading customer competent culture training? Well, that's a lot of the people who are sitting on the sides of this room and some of our coordinators in the different business support and support department.
Okay. Thanks, David. Good question. Any others? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Oh, yes, we have some introductions.
Well, good evening. I'm here to introduce to you tonight a number of new people to administrative positions, as well as several others who are currently in administrative positions moving into, have been promoted into other administrative positions. So as you know, I usually come in and introduce each one of them, and I do a bio for each candidate that's in here. Several of them, we've already done that for, so I'm just going to introduce them and just have them be recognized. So some of them are happy that I wasn't going to be doing the whole bio. The new one, there were folks I'm going to go ahead and introduce. So I would like, Beth Alabac, if you would please do it. Beth is a graduate from Central Catholic High School in Hampton, Ohio. She attended the University of Dayton, where she earned her Master's Degree in nineteen ninety-six, and she also attended Ashland University where she completed her Master's Degree in two thousand and three. As Alabac began her employment with Akron Schools in November two thousand and secured a position as a third-grade teacher and taught at Lincoln Elementary until June two thousand and one. In August of two thousand and one, she began teaching sixth grade at Ennis Middle School, where she remains at the present time teaching language arts. She's being recommended tonight for a Dean of Students at Bookto for the sixteen-seventeen school year. Congratulations.
I just wanted to thank the board for this opportunity. I brought my mother with me tonight. She has been in the district for forty-six years. Both of my parents are educators, and I couldn't ask for two better mentors. So thanks to get the opportunity.
Natalie graduated from Xenia High School in Xenia, Ohio. She continued her education, earning her Master's Degree in two thousand and seven from Whitburn University. She also attended the University of Akron, where she completed her Master's Degree in two thousand and fifteen. She began her employment with Akron Public Schools in August two thousand and eleven. Ms. Camerones secured a position as a math teacher at Akron Alternative Academy until June two thousand and fourteen, and in August of that year, she became a lead teacher and still remains at the present time. Tonight, she's being recommended for an assistant principal position at HIR. Congratulations.
I just want to thank the board for the opportunity. My husband is a Garfield grad and a counselor at North High School, and my in-laws are both retirees from Akron Public Schools, so thank you very much.
Jennifer Seda? Jennifer is a graduate of Baldwin Wallace College in nineteen ninety-nine, where she received a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Speech and Language Pathology. She then obtained a Master's Degree in Special Education, A-12, and then a Master's of Education in Early Childhood Education. She also obtained her Principalship Pleasure in two thousand and thirteen. She began her career as a dimension specialist for Akron Schools in two thousand and three, and most recently in two thousand and fifteen, she was interim Dean of Students at HIR CLC. Tonight, she is being recommended for the Dean of Position at HIR. Tonight, she is being recommended for the dean of position at higher CLC. Congratulations.
Thank you to the board and others, the board staff that I've known since I've been at Akron Public Schools, to continue my journey here.
Some of the other announcements I'd like to make tonight. Elise Clark. Is going to be assistant principal at Firestone High School. Congratulations.
Will be assistant principal at Miller South, formerly dean. Erica Glover. Moving from dean of assistants, dean of students to assistant principal at Volcal Tina Healy. From dean of students to assistant principal at East High School. Mr. Jones. Charles Jones is moving from Robinson Elementary. He's going to be principal at Jennings. Tracy Landon. Dean of students at Firestone to assistant principal at Firestone. Chuck Morrison. From assistant principal, middle school assistant principal to assistant principal at Firestone High School. Also wanted to make sure I mentioned Mr. Byron Hopkins, although no burn action is required tonight, but Mr. Hopkins will be our new principal at Volcal. Katherine Johnson, standing back there in the doorway, will be our new principal at Firestone High School. I have one more. Tamiko Hatcher, is he here? Okay. Tamiko, Tamiko is a graduate of Alliance High School. He obtained his master's degree from Mount Union in nineteen ninety-eight and his master's degree from Mary Grove College in two thousand and two. He received a principal license in two thousand and four. He comes to us with six years of teaching experience with Canton City Schools, where he began his career in education as an elementary teacher teaching sixth-grade science. He was the science department chair there for two years, a football coach for five years, and track coach for six. His honors and awards include being listed amongst those who have served in county forty and other notable leaders, and a two thousand and two teacher of the year. Moving on to Alliance Schools for three years as the middle school assistant principal is where he stayed for the next several years, and in two thousand and five, he had the opportunity to lead the high school level in the engineering and health academy areas. He led the Maple Heights School District and student staff through one of the largest strikes in Ohio in the school system. In two thousand and six, the opportunity to return back home to Stark County arose, and Mr. Hatcher decided to work for paying local schools. He began this new venture as the engineering and health academy principal for four years, and in two thousand and ten, became the associate principal for two years, and in two thousand and twelve, became the campus principal. Some of the programs that he oversaw include special ed services, delivery initiative, graduation rate changes, community partnership expansion, career tech development, building infrastructure realignment, just to name a few. Tonight, Mr. Hatcher is recommended for the director of specialty programs position. Congratulations.
I just wanted to make sure that I had a chance to vote for the board and tell you thank you. Honored and privileged to join this dynamic team. I know one of the mission and visions is to make this the best or number-one urban school district in the United States, and I don't want to put that qualifier on with some of the dynamic things that I'm seeing here. Forty-eight years of people spending their blood, sweat, and tears to retire from a dynamic school district, but more importantly, the qualifier being the number-one urban school. We just want to be the number-one school in the United States, and my goal is to make sure that I bring everything that I've acquired in those various places here and to make sure that the students here have a wonderful opportunity in the community as graduations that we feel wonderful about, and that our kids can come back to our Akron Public Schools and do some dynamic things. So, thank you.
I have two more that I almost missed. Doug Paris, if you could please stand. Doug, Doug will be the interim principal this year at Volcal. And Dina Popa, interim principal at St. High. Thanks for coming.
Congratulations to all of you. I think you have all listed them out, but this one, for the NAACP dinner, I didn't like to interrupt you. There's no superintendent's report, but I do believe Ms. Walsh has a report out on the NAACP dinner. Are you going to report out on that?
Yes. Um, I attended, yesterday I attended the NAACP luncheon, scholarship luncheon, and our students did us proud, but Mr. James was the emcee, so he actually did, Akron Public Schools was very proud, and it was a very, very lovely event and amazing amount of students that we had represented. There, there were a few from, from St. V's and one from Coventry, and I think beyond that, I think every other one came out of the Akron Public Schools, so it was, it was just a fabulous event, and our students did us proud, as usual, as well as Mr. James.
Thank you for that. Treasurers, no results. Committee.
Oh, well, and Mary Atlee Kelly was actually the program chairman, so she actually was another person I should have pointed out. I didn't mean to ignore her. And, and I will point out, because I went to it last year, and I think the biggest change that Mary made that, that really showed is that I thought last year it was all about everybody else that was there, and that the scholarship was an afterthought. I was, I was really, and this year, it was all about the scholarship and all about the kids, and I think it was just an amazing change in the whole program. You do want to adapt.
Thank you for the, for the report. There's no treasurer's report, so we're on to committee reports with legal contracts and board policy.
And we are presenting for the second of three readings. Policy fifty-three twenty revised on immunization, AG fifty-three twenty revised on immunization, policy seventy-three ten revised on disposition of surplus property, and policy seventy-four fifty revised property inventory.
Thank you. Finance and capital management?
No report.
Instructional policy and student achievement committee?
No report.
Unfinished business. Certification of Innovation Generation Scholarships. Everyone receive this information in their board packet. Are there any questions on the certification? If not, I believe we're looking for a motion.
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Any new business? With that, we do have a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section one twenty-one, point two-two, G, one. To consider personnel matters. Can I have a motion, please?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yeah.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
With that, we are...